We will start our meeting, please step for the flag salute. Polling.
Put your hand over your head. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in closed session, the board took action to approve following management and Mr. um Gonzalez, sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, I've been calling him Sam today. Will let us know what went on.
Madam President, so it is my pleasure to acknowledge we have Mr. Luis Carrillo here. He was a career that as stated in closed session by Yanis Boat, to the position of interim AP at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. He's serving that capacity for the duration of the year. Congratulations, I know Luis is a product of the district and a longtime employee of the district. And I think he has some family members here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for this opportunity, I'm really grateful. I brought my two little ones, my Dale, Vincent, and my beautiful wife, Erica. So thank you, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. We are moving on to public comment. At this point in our agenda. Presentation to the board, Dr. Simon, please introduce our presenters.
Actually, Madam President, I will go ahead tonight.
Oh.
Introduce our speaker, and so thank you for the opportunity. And so tonight, we look very much forward to a presentation from our director of CTE. As you well know, for the past a number of years, CTE has been a focus and a center goal for CMUSD in the area of local control accountability plan. So every year we grow, every year we get better, and part of that getting better is really to hear not only from staff, Dr. Bob Foster and the team, but this time really from the students themselves. Where I had the opportunity to quickly meet three of our students. So we're looking forward to their presentation, and as we had mentioned somewhat earlier, that is continue to get the word out and making sure that the options we have for our students in terms of different career pathways is well known, and so that the option could be exercised. And so communication is obviously a critical piece to this presentation as well. So I'm ready as part of that team, and thank you for being here. Without further ado, Dr. Foster.
Good evening, you guys know I love coming. I would like to point out one thing first is, I want to look at your fancy mugs. Executive Cabinet, we can work on getting. I need another, just a logo, and then on the back, you can get your offices off. I have one that was an uncharted run of the year, we ran into a time jump this year, so we had some help with these. But Roosevelt has full capability of being able to do that, and a couple of our other high schools also do, if they have the right equipment. So thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to present CTE and apologize for their readiness. I want to thank my vision for being here, and they're all wearing their pink and their blue and sporty and the walk coming up for.
Kathy Esposito.
And so it's an honor of all of that. Of course, my other one, this is Ice Cubadive, and so this is a diving class on top of my room. So again, thank you, I'd like to introduce, do formal introductions right now of who's going to be joining us tonight. I have several speakers, both adults and students. I'd like to start on this end with Kat Wallace. She is basically my counselor, we brought her over from Santiago, she's working on a doctorate in CTE and professional development. Next is Lenny Bailey. Lenny is a contract with us, but she's my business and community liaison. And without Lenny, we would not be where we are with the businesses and the progress that we made. So she'll talk a little bit about that. And we have Ryan, and I may be mistaken, not learning how to study, it's kind of your last name.
Yule.
Yule, that's what I thought, so Ryan Yules from Norco High School, and he will be talking about Norco High. Yeah, it's like ice hockey shirt. Then Gloria, Gloria Coder with Reach Out, will talk about some of the work we're doing with our pathways. And then we have two young ladies from Corona High School that are in the health career pathway over there. That'd be Daisy Rosendo and Evelyn Alcaraz. And then on the end is Brittany Faust, who you all know, who'll do some of our public relations and give you an update on that. I always like to start with either a book, or a quote, or something just to kind of set the stage. And everybody knows, you've heard me speak before, that I like John Dewey. And John Dewey, yes, he goes way back, but he was an American philosopher, a psychologist, and an educational reformer. But why is he important to CTE? Because he believes in hands-on learning, learn by doing. And so that's extremely important to what we do in the CTE world. But it also helps set the stage for, this quote in particular, helps set the stage where we're going with LCAP and making adjustments. We have made some adjustments this year to the LCAP goals. Remember, Dr. Moon said, significant part of our LCAP is CTE, goal three and four fall under my responsibility. And we have pretty well maxed those goals out, and where we can do, CCI is changing, and so we're looking at how can we support, our LCAP goal supports CCI. So our old goal was increase the number of students who completed a pathway. But we've gotten much more specific on that, and it's increased the number of students who complete two-year pathways as measured by the CCI. Goal number four is increase the rate of students participating in high-wage, high-demand jobs. A little bit of redundancy enough, but we made the new goal much more specific. How many of our kids are earning industry certifications? And so both goals are very trackable, align with CCI, and this is what we do. I mean, this, I don't need two goals, I don't need the CCI to tell me, this is what we do in CTE, okay? So I wanted to highlight a couple programs enrollment-wise before we get into some specific data. At the high schools, we have approximately 6,500 students, this is current, this is our numbers I took on Wednesday. 6,500 students that are taking classes, CTE credential classes, from 63 teachers at the high school level. Now, not all those teachers are, teach full five periods. A lot of them do, some of them do other, like Kristen Johnson at Corona High School, does math and project lead the way, engineering and aerospace engineering. At the intermediate schools, we currently have 2,400 students in CTE courses that are taught by CTE and credential teachers. Big numbers. But the one I really want to highlight, and I'm probably near and dear to a couple of you, it's near and dear to me because it was a pathway that I started five years ago that I never thought we would see the results that we've seen with this pathway. And that's the Health and Medical Science Pathways, and you'll hear more about what we're doing with those later. We have three intermediate schools that offer seventh and eighth grade medical science courses. We have five high schools that offer various aspects of the Health and Medical Science Technology. But here are the big numbers. Health Science and Medical Technology, this year, right now, we have over 3,000 students enrolled in the Health and Medical Science Pathway in this district. And what's important about that is when you look at brochures like this one, that was published by UCR, and you talk about what the growing jobs are in our area, and health is right there at the top of them. So we're preparing kids to go out into industry, okay? And you can see, courses that are taught by CTE credential teachers, 923, not taught by credential teachers or CTE credential teachers, they're fully credentialed, they just don't have the extra add-on of CTE, 755. And all of our intermediate courses, which is just three high schools or three intermediate schools, we've got almost 1,500 kids enrolled in medical science pathways. So let's look a little bit more deeper at the figures and how they relate to our two CCI goals. So by the numbers, these are going to be baseline numbers only, and I want to thank IT and the crew over here because they have really worked to put this data together for us, and we have our own dashboard for CTE. So the first one, so this is baseline from last year. For goal three, they completed 200, or two pathways, these are individual students. We had 722 kids. Now what that means, they have to complete at least two courses in a pathway. And that's how the state picks it up on CCI, at least two courses. Now as a personal philosophy, even though we have the two pathways, what's best for kids is three and four-year pathways. But the state collects on two-year pathways, so that's the way we're reporting it. Reporting it like this, should this number be higher? Yes. The reason it's not is, you guys have all heard the CalPads, the state collection system. We've been working over the last three to four years to try and get that all to align. CalPads is still working through their own issues to try to get that all together. So we fully expect these numbers to go up. When you break it down, I could go into each of these, but at this point, I'm not. But we have provided some subgroup information. Do point out zero for our homeless and our foster students. Biggest reason for that is I believe it's transit rate. And you have to complete this, you have to have two years. And you don't complete those two years, you don't fall into that category. That doesn't mean that Kat and I aren't going to spend some time going through our rosters for first-year kids and seeing, hey, what can we do to help move that on? I think our socioeconomic kids, when you look at the economic data for the Inland Empire and what's happening as far as education, really what's going on is businesses are not creating jobs fast enough. There's a lot of colleges out there that are putting a lot of kids out, but they're not creating enough jobs fast enough to put those kids to work. And so that's a big thing, and we'll touch on business and industry a little bit later. Just as a note, this is a first-year tool, so this becomes our baseline. And if we get our pathway straightened out, we get CalPads straightened out, this number will go up. And then the second, goal four, is CTE certifications, and what are we doing there? You've heard me talk a little bit about this before. So this is showing 774 kids have earned some kind of industry certification. But what you need to know is that 774 is one kid, one certification. We have kids, students that are earning multiple certifications. And those certifications are arranged, they're from CPR up to SolidWorks and our manufacturing classes. Same kind of numbers you're seeing in our, in our subgroups here. I'm honestly, I'm very pleased with this. When we talk about non-traditional numbers in male, female, as a district, we're about 35% non-traditional classes. So make sense, everybody.
No African-American?
Oh, I have that date, I didn't put it on here. Yeah, no, I can provide it to you, I have it. But they were, I can tell you they were on the website. These are some of the certifications, I've been through these before, so I'm not going to talk a lot about them. Some of them are really easy, some of them require a little bit more work. Especially if you're looking at SolidWorks, Mastercam, some of those, those are three- and four-year certifications. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Kat to talk a little bit about some more academic stuff, A through G.
Thank you, Gina. So I'm actually really excited about this slide, especially coming from a counseling perspective. With the vision that Gina has had for CTE and the vision that the district has had, this is great work that we're going to talk about. So we took a look at the data, and again, the IT team has been phenomenal and really working with us to really create a baseline for our program. And so the chart that you see up here, and I'll point up here so you guys can see, the total marks for fall of 2008 is how many grades were given for CTE courses that were A through G. So in the fall, we had 8,593, and in the spring, we had 9,107. In the fall of 2018, we had 7,812 kids that earned a C minus or better, which is phenomenal. It's a 90% success rate for students who took a CTE course. And in the spring, we had 8,222 students for a success rate of 90%. So in total, for the year of 2018 and 2019, we had a total of 90.58% of success rate for that academic school year. So in over 17,000 marks, we had over 16,000 students earn a C minus or better. And another thing that we're really proud to say is that we have 53 CTE courses that are A through G aligned. So this goes back to our passion and our emphasis and our focus to be college and career-ready. So not only are our kids earning certifications and leadership opportunities, but we're aligning them to be college and career-ready as well. So another focus that we have is articulation. So on the top chart that you see up here, last year, in the class of 2018, 2019, over 1,000 students were recommended for articulation credit. 97%, of them were awarded. So we had over 1,000 students that were awarded articulation credit. So for those of you that don't know articulation credit, that's transferable credit that goes into the colleges. So this is another way that we are increasing that college and career readiness with our students. And these, the other districts that you see up there, of course, are our local districts. So when you see the robust number that we have as a district, we're really proud of that. And then down by the agreements to the college, our district is in the lead in terms of articulation agreements in our local area. So in Norco, we have over 20, we have 20 agreements right now with Norco College. So we are kind of maxed out with Norco College, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. We currently have our major partners right now, our RCC, Norco College, and we even have some partnerships with Mount SAC. What you don't see up there is we also have partnerships with Palomar College, Cerritos College, and Mount San Jacinto as well. But we have very small numbers in those agreements. But as you can see, that number 20 there with Norco, we're maxed out, so we're looking to see how we can continue to build these articulation agreements with our local area. So our next step is we have reached out to Chape College, and so we are working with them to help create some more articulation agreements and to align and to continue to pursue other colleges as well that align with the CTE pathways that we have, so that our students can earn that articulated credit and go in a step ahead of the game. And what's great about this opportunity is some of these students that would never think about going to college or would never, or think they can't do it because they might be first generation, now they have an opportunity to do it and to be successful at it and to show, hey, I can do this too. So this is a great opportunity, and Dr. Bossner and I are going to continue to do work in this area. So this is something new for us this year. This is a regional parent counselor leadership academy. Last year, I had the opportunity to go and be part of the Inland Empire Economic Partnership. For those of you who don't know, IEP, they are, they are very big politically in our region. They are big in job force creation, they are big in leadership, and they are big in increasing the economic growth of our region. So they reached out to us, and we are the first district to partner with them, and I got to experience a 12-month academy with them. So once a month, I went out to the site, to different locations across the region, and really learned about the trends and the needs, and I got to share it back with our team. So upon the end of that, we asked if it would be good if we could increase counselors in part of that. So we are the very first district to partner with the Inland Empire Partnership, and we have 20 counselors onboard with them this year, going out to industries, and are going to be learning about the trends and the needs to share back with our students. We've also invited two college and career clerks, one from Santiago and one from Centennial. And what the goal and the focus of this is going to be, we also, in addition to this partnership, San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools is also part of it, and they really wanted their parents connected to this as well. So we are in a cohort of parents and counselors. So the biggest thing is we wanted to really increase the counselor awareness. Not only is it important for us to build pathways for our students, but build pathways that are aligned to the needs of our industry and our backyard, right? We would love our students to not only live in our area, but to work in our area and to be productive citizens in our area. So the three main focuses are going to be to increase industry and career awareness, provide an educational experience, so these are more than just field trips, but they're actually experiences, and I'm going to talk more about that on the next slide. And then the purpose is to expose the counselors and the parents to the economy and the local area and the needs. So in the, in the slide here, you see, this is the schedule of our, of where the counselors are going to be going. So Gina talked about the health profession, one of the places that I got to visit last year was Loma Linda, and that was very impactful for me, because it changed my perspective. And I'm, and I'm a big supporter and always have been of CTE, but it really changed me because now I knew the fingers of how to get the kids in. And so really getting out there to the industries was really important, and the need and the growth in the Inland Empire right now, the medical pathway is the second largest need in our industry right now, it's the fastest-growing industry sector in our local area. The first is logistics. So our counselors are going to get out to different, different types of locations, and the first one that they went to was Universal Technical Institute. We went out there on October 4th. So this was, this is the cohort here, this is our district along with San Bernardino parents. And this was more than just a field trip, it was an experience for them. We already have, UTI has already agreed to, if, they will provide a bus and lunches for our students if they wanted to come out and do a visit, so we already have intermediate and middle school counselors that are already trying to fill a bus to get these kids out there to, to experience this, which was great. In addition to the, the visit, they also got to hear from the IEP's CEO, Paul Vernello, who's very well-respected and connected in our industry and across the state. And then they also got to hear from Dr. John Hewson, who's also an economic forecaster of our region. So it was a very good, exciting and productive day, to say the least. I'm now going to pass it off to Lenny Bailey.
Good evening. I am so excited about career education. And I said career education because I don't know if you guys have heard that the state is changing it from CTE to career education, as it should be. And I was thinking, I'm so excited about a lot of the things we've been able to do in terms of supporting Dr. Bossner's vision, that I don't even remember how many years I've been doing this. I think five, maybe. But at any rate, my job is to bring business and industry to the table because they're a critical part of preparing our students for the workforce. So I was looking at our names in our database, and the thing is, it's more than just a database. We have over 300 active. By active, I mean people that actually come out to our career days and our other events, and they represent over 75 to 100 companies. So again, these aren't just names and numbers, these are people who are involved with us and come to our events. This is a great time because what the industry is saying is they want a more diverse workforce. Also, so many people are retiring, you guys are all young, you don't know about that. But in so many industries, you have everything from court reporters, you know, we know about medical doctors, pilots. So many industries have people about to retire, and they're realizing that they have to start reaching our students and reaching them while they're young. So one of the things that I'm responsible for, advisory boards. And they meet twice a year, normally May and December, our next one is December 18th. And let me go. Okay, now I have to apologize to Dr. Bossner for this picture, but this was our last advisory board meeting, and she's doing a presentation. Now, we used to just bring everybody in and have them sit. Now, we have enough that we can actually put them by industry. We put our teachers with them, we put an administrator at each table, and we give them exercises, partnership exercises. And the goal is to get the relationships at that level so that teachers will have a business partner that they can call on if they need a speaker or if they want their student to talk to somebody. So these meetings are really getting big, and we're successful with them. Our newest thing, we have enough people now who are active with us as business partners that we're doing industry, industry advisory boards. And actually, our aviation advisory board, we just started the pathway, but the advisory board's probably about three, three years old. We have a number of pilots, we've got military pilots, we've got commercial, private pilots, we've got Cal Baptist, we've got UPS, FedEx. And the wonderful thing is, all of them want to work with us, it's just a matter of putting them in order, a runway. Forgive me for that. Who's next? Hospitality, Tiffany Regina is doing a wonderful job with that program. Another event we want to have with them is some kind of chopped competition. And we have a partner for them, Valencia Terrace, the senior facility. And their chef loves Tiffany's program, and he participates a lot, so that's where we'll have it, if we can just find the time. Cybersecurity, a meeting with people from the state and our community colleges, this is big. And we all know, because we hear about everybody who's being hacked. A lot of money is going into getting students trained in cybersecurity. And because we have Catherine onboard now, we were able to quickly come up with some curriculum, and we're about to get going with a cybersecurity pathway, this is very big for us. I should back up and say, we're the only K-12 in the area, and we've visited others out of state that has an aviation program, we're very proud of that. Building and construction, they really want to work with us. Those of you who are at the expo saw, we had a number of them there, they're bringing scholarships, they've given us an MOU that they want to partner with each of our high schools because there is a big shortage, all kinds of, of jobs, from trades to analysts to engineers. Energy and public service, we haven't even had a chance, I haven't had a chance to meet with Dr. Bossner about this. I spent the weekend with the Metropolitan Water District getting a tour of the Colorado River Aqueduct, wonderful trip. They want to work with us, and their model, like so many other companies, is starting at the middle school level so that the students can pick the correct pathways, going to the high school in the right pathway while they're either articulation or duly enrollment with a community college and coming out with jobs and internships. So MWD is like other companies that want to do this, we also have Edison. Edison sends more career speakers to us than any other district, and they come again and again. A couple of years ago, Dr. Bossner and I met with them to make sure we were considered for scholarships also, and I think that has happened. So a lot going on, public services, police, fire, the FBI is one of our big supporters now. Yes. Youth Education Motivation Program, that's how I met Dr. Bossner, I coordinated the program all over the Inland Empire. And for some reason, they didn't think that Corona needed a program like that. And she was my daughter's middle school teacher, so that's how YAMP got here. YAMP is actually 42 years old, older than all of us. And it was started by a couple of people, a couple of guys, as the Mexican-American Personnel Association. One was Joe Baca, who went on to become a congressman, the other was a guy named Art Alcaraz. And he went on to Riverside Community College. So, he, he became an administrator. They picked up the program as part of their middle school career exploration. And, uh, they had a, a woman, a former principal, who had run the program for years. Uh, Pablo Sanchez, he also had it at his school for years. And they brought me onboard because they, they needed an organizer and wanted to continue it. And I brought it to Corona. We started CFIS and now all the schools do it. And it's essentially a program where adult mentors go into a classroom and talk about their background. And the main purpose is to encourage students to complete school and start thinking about what their future career, uh, would look like and what it'll take to get there. We have a, a diverse group of speakers. We don't just pull from people who've had eight to twelve years of college. We have them, but we also have people who, for instance, maybe we had, there was a single mother who had to go back to school. And we tell people, be very, very honest, that your career is not gonna be from here to here. It's gonna be like this. So, it's a, it's a successful program. That's one of our FBI agents there. And I probably shouldn't have that picture of him, but... No, they, they got us at the expo. Not having pictures, but anyway. The expo. I don't know how many of you guys got a chance to attend it, uh, but it was a great event. Thank you to our Ed Services team. They were traffic cops. They were moderators. They did everything. Thank you to IT for support and especially our communications office. They were just wonderful. Uh, mock interviews. Uh, in total, at the expo, we had over twenty-two businesses there. Everything from court reporters to, uh, we had FIDM. We had, uh, I mentioned the FBI. We had building and construction. Twenty-one businesses and sixty individual business partners were there. Now, this is invaluable for students. We did over a hundred and twenty mock interviews. Here's the mock interviews there. That helps the students with their soft skills. Whoops, what did I do?
It's okay.
Oh, I see, okay. Panels. We had industry panels, healthcare, STEM, cybersecurity. We had, uh, the Regional Deputy Sector Navigator in Cybersecurity to come. And Donna Woods, who leads the CA Cyber Hub program. She was there. Aviation, of course. This is the aviation panel. I stopped in. We had a lot of parents wanting to know, how can my kid be a pilot? How can they get a career in aviation? And that's what it's for. Uh, manufacturing, public service, business and finance, building and construction. Now, I also mentioned that we had about twenty-one, uh, people who displayed outside in a booth. Loved this picture. This is Boudreaux Pipeline and they brought an excavation simulator. And the, the, the kids got a chance, the students, to be in it. Look at this young guy. Can you imagine the experience he had working the simulator? And that's how it starts. That's how we get them excited into, uh, future careers. Uh, I use the term relationships because, again, these people aren't just names on a list. Uh, our connection with them goes two ways, you know? When the, we have, uh, March Air Force Base, Reserve Base is one of our partners. When they retire or leave the service, they call us, you know? And I, I go and, and speak for them. We give them certificates and that's how it should work. Uh, Don Kendrick, who some of you know, he's at every YAMP. We have people who have done probably thirty or more YAPs. That next picture is one of my March guys in his hazmat suit. And he brought it to, to show kids. Now, the scary thing is he had been wearing it for two weeks, but anyway. The bottom picture, you, you recognize some of those people. We brought a number of people to our district. Uh, this was, uh, Assembly Member Cervantes. We gave her the first tour. We brought IEEP. We brought, uh, we've strengthened our relationship with, uh, NSWC. And, uh, you guys recognize that person in the corner there with her son. And we have family relationships. We bring a lot of students who graduate, Ryan, when you graduate, you gotta come back and do YAMP. We bring them back, uh, to our school. And that is pretty much, uh... Oh, no, I have one more slide. Oh, another great picture. This is at Caesar Chavez. And we'll be there for YAMP this Friday, if any of you wanna drop in. It's from seven forty-five to eleven. Uh, kids and adults, no matter the age, get excited when we have the fire truck and they talk about occupations. A few of our business partners, I'm not gonna go through them all. And it was tough just putting this list together. But I want you to see the diversity that we have because I especially understand how important that is to students. Uh, my big thing now is getting more girl students, women in aviation. So, we've got about, as I said, about thirty pilots now who participate. Um, all guys, we like them, but all guys, you know? And I've been asking, what about a woman pilot? I've been, been, uh, bugging them. We have our first one. She'll be at Caesar Chavez on Friday. Her name is Andrea Garcia. Now, can you imagine what kind of role model she's gonna be? Uh, women, oh, and she has friends, she says, who work for United. She says, two black women, they couldn't make this week. They're coming to the next one. Women in construction, they were part of, um, our expo. And at the expo, they announced a scholarship, which I believe is going to, uh, Norco High. And speaking of Norco High, women in manufacturing, uh, we're part of their committee for their big event. Norco High students did their programs, their graphics. And we presented a one thousand dollar scholarship to their team. Not we, uh, the women in manufacturing group presented a one thousand dollar scholarship to Norco High's, uh, team. And we have a student that's gonna tell you all about it. And we're very glad to have him here. Ryan, you up?
Hello, I'm Ryan. I've, I've been part of Mr. Elton's Design and Effectuation class for four years now. I found out about his class at the CT Expo in my eighth grade year. I also, I've, through my four years, I've competed at Skills USA Regionals three times now. I've been state three times and I won the national championship last year. I'm gonna go to nationals again, hopefully, this year. And, um, I like having CTE classes because I've never really been a big school person. I've always been more hands-on, able to use tools to build stuff. It's cool that I have classes I can go to, have access to CNC machines, welding, and all kinds of 3D printers, Morse CNC mills. It's just cool that so many people help support CTE and... Because I plan on going to trade school after. I wanna become an electrical lineman.
Has somebody had the opportunity, wanna be an alignment? Makes pretty good money. Has, has somebody talked you through some of those steps?
Uh, my uncle's a union electrician. He's not an lineman and I've always kinda had fun playing with wires and that sort of bad stuff. Uh, I did take, uh, drafting with Mr. Leonard.
Hi, I'm Gloria Coder. And we, first of all, we do, we wanna thank Ryan so much for, um, coming up and sharing that with us. I don't wanna stand up this way. Everybody's been standing up there, okay? I'm from the Inland Health Coalition, um, and it's part of Reach Out. And I've been contracted with the district for the past three years. And this is beginning my fourth year now to come in and help with the health pathway programs to help them be, uh, a little bit more successful and to give them a couple more boosters in some areas that they didn't have before. These are some of the high schools that we're working with. And as Dr. Bossler mentioned earlier, we have the five high schools and we have three intermediate schools that I work with. And I just love this picture here. This is when I was testing the students, um, for BLS, which is Basic Life Support CPR, last year. And this is in gym room from sports medicine. In working with the health pathways, we have several things that we do with them. And one of them that we do is called our LIFE internships. LIFE stands for Learning Inspired Field Experience. And that is our internships where they're in health entities. And they have to do a minimum of forty, forty to sixty hours worth of internship with that entity. We also have the job shadows and it can be in some of the same businesses and they do like eight to sixteen hours. We have site visits that we do and, you know, site visits, field trips. And some of the exciting places that they've gone to, we've taken them to, uh, AMR ambulance out here in Riverside. And they get to see everything from the beginning, all behind, where they work on the ambulances. Um, they get to see the crashed ambulances back there. Um, we've taken them to the Lakers Training Facility for the sports medicine classes. And we've got a tour and we got to see where all the, all the players shower. We didn't see them showering. Got to see their pool tables. We got to see their whole locker room. We got to sit in their chairs. I mean, it was really cool. And we got to see where they do all their training facility. Really interesting for the students. We, uh, usually do a few trips out to Ben Hart Training Center, which is part of the Reno Valley College. And we get to see the EMTs and the paramedic training. And the kids could do hands-on participating in what they happen to be learning at that time. We also took one trip this last year to Wifel's Mortuary out in Palm Springs. And that was to learn a little bit more about mortuary science. And the kids, most of them enjoyed it. We had a few, yeah. But it was very interesting to see the behind-the-scenes that happens with, um, in a mortuary and how they do that. Um, we've also attended Kaiser School of Anesthesiology down in Pasadena. And the kids have got to do all kinds of hands-on activities, including intubation on the mannequins, of course. And they got to do full codes. And those are just a few of those that we've done. We've got plenty of speakers that we bring in. We've got, um, we have, I forgot my speakers here. Some of the speakers that we bring in, we come from UCR Medical School out there. And we have a lot of the family medical residents that will come out and talk to the students. We have Dr. Fajita. Of course, he comes out and talks to, about physical therapy. We've had radiologists, cardiologists. Uh, we've had nurse oncology. Uh, we have the mini-medical school that'll come out and talk to the kids. And they talk to them about anything about like addiction, uh, wellness. They do autism awareness, a lot of those type of things, HIV and AIDS. We've also had a forensic pathologist come out, respiratory therapy, sports med. Those are just to name a few of them. I also work with the HOSA jump chapters and their CTSOs. And then, um, HOSA, which stands for Health Occupation Students of America, Future Health Professionals now. It's a long thing. And we have, that's at the high school level. And JUMP is the junior upcoming medical professionals. So, that's part of, it's our middle school division of the HOSA. So, I've worked with them and we work on leadership activities. We work on different medical, um, activities just to get them interested in. Everything from the hands-on CPR, we do medical measurements, um, just, uh, anything that gets them interested in. We teach them how to do blood pressures even. We have a lot of trains that we do. We have hands-on CPR, the BLS. We do HIPAA. We do like more pathogen training. And then we also do the mock interviews. This last year, we just did mock interviews with Corona High and we had like twenty-one students there. And these are just some of our, I have so many I wanted to share, but these are only just a few of them that I can share. And we have that first picture up there. That's when our Corona High School students were getting their, um, stoles for completing the LIFE scholarship. And they also won, or the, the LIFE internship and they won, um, some scholarships also. We have, we have a scholarship award that we give out. And the pathway last year at Corona High, that was the first year of them completing their four-year pathway. So, they did have a big celebration. And I think we see a few board members that are in that picture. Um, we also have pictures of them doing hands-on CPR, our visit to the Lakers. And then that far picture on the right, that was when we went out and visited Torrance Medical Center. And the kids have to have hands-on with all kinds of, um, tools and experiences. And it was just a great time. I'd like to at this time introduce... Thank you. I want to introduce our two Corona High students from the medical program. We have Daisy Rosendo and Evelyn Alcarez. And they've been, been, um, since their freshman year and they're both seniors. So, they're gonna be, I'd love to tell you just a little bit about them.
Hello. I'm Evelyn Baby. And just a little bit about our experience in the health careers pathway. Well, we've been in there since our freshman year. Um, before going into the program, I had an idea of, that I wanted to go into the medical field, but I didn't exactly know which pathway I'd be choosing. Um, but, um, I heard about it in the school, in eighth grade, when we were setting up for Corona High. And I'm like, okay, I know I wanna go medical, so I'll go to health careers pathway. And at the right now, they've given us all these hands-on experiences with field trips, a volunteer opportunity, uh, giving us opportunities to get certified on CPR, QPR, and bloodborne pathogens. It's just really, uh, giving me more of a sense of where exactly I want to be working in the medical field.
Yeah, for me, I also found out about the CTE, the, the health careers pathway in my junior high. And I, from like my kindergarten years, I've always wanted to be a vet. But I didn't know like the steps to get there or how to become a vet. So, in my, I learned about the health careers pathway. It was like, oh, I'm, I'm gonna do it for like the experience and like learning the hand-on stuff, like doing, so like CPR and all that stuff. But now, because of the health careers pathway and the CTE, I've, I've moved towards nursing. Like now I'm set on becoming nursing. Like next year, I wanna go to CDU to study nursing. And I feel like what moved me towards that was like all, all our guest speakers that we had, the field trips and like the work settings that we got to see and like what I wanna see myself in like professional-wise. I definitely went to CDU as well.
CDU, what, what do you wanna do?
I'm, I want to become a midwife with pediatrician.
So, you, you both said you heard about it in eighth grade. What, what's, first off, what schools were you at in eighth grade?
Uh, two different.
Eight by eight.
Okay, so two different, okay, that's, that's gonna be happy. And how did you hear about it? What, what?
So, while we were, uh, signing up for our applications for Corona High, side of allergies. I, I, I wanted to do STEM, but I also wanted to do Avid, but we couldn't do both. And that's when my teacher told me about the health careers path and I was like, oh, okay. And I could do both like Avid and health careers.
It was about the same thing for me. Just, uh, I did wanna be in Avid because of the college application in the future, but I did want to be part of STEM, health careers pathway, what means.
All right. Now, it's even more interesting information. So, this is the question. We have all these great programs. You've heard about great testimonials from our students. So, how are they finding out about our programs, correct? How are our parents finding out? Um, but before I jump into that, I do wanna give a quick shout-out to our public relations specialist, Lily Moda. She, um, is so passionate about CTE. She works very, very closely with our CTE team. But unfortunately, tonight, she's actually up in Los Angeles, accepting an award for a couple of our campaigns from the PRSA. She's celebrating up there. We're very excited for her and I'll be filling in. So, tonight, I'm gonna tell you a few of our strategic outreach, um, options and, um, strategies that we have used in sharing our CTE programs specifically, um, to our EL parents and our multimedia communication, as well as electronic communication. So, strategic outreach. We are, um, very often in our meetings, in our team meetings, strategizing, how can we better reach our parents? How can we get this information to them? And this year, we have actually done a few things to expand our reach to our parents. Some of those include, um, dropping off our marketing for our CTE program. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with our CTE brochure. Uh, Lily helped design that and we are very excited about it. Our parents are excited about it. It's one of the things that flies off our shelf the quickest. We make sure that those are stacked at our libraries, our cities, our Chamber of Commerce, um, here at the district and the parent center. Uh, we'll also be updating that this year, so we're excited for a new design will be coming this winter. So, keep your eyes out for that. We also do strategic social media campaigns. This includes, uh, highlighting our different pathways, um, telling the positive stories of our students, uh, press releases when they do go and win national championships. Then we also do personal outreach. We know not every parent is maybe paying attention constantly online to the district news, right? So, we go out to our, um, back-to-school nights. We go to the Parent Academy Outreach, um, at Home Gardens Academy. That's the picture of Lily and Patty at our office there, um, making those personal connections, being sure to tell our parents about it. And if you ever talk to Lily, she is the biggest, um, proponent of our CTE programs. She sells it like no one else. Um, it is so fun to hear about her and the passion she has because she's worked so closely with these teams and told so many of our success stories, especially when we've gone out...
Especially when we've gone out to these classes and captured the story of these students, it excites our department. So um, they go out, make those personal connections. We also do a few different strategic outreach. For instance, on Facebook, we have over ten thousand likes on our Facebook page. But not everyone's seeing every post we put out. But one of the features Facebook does have is a Facebook events post. So if you post that, hey, we have a CTE expo as an event, it's going to notify everyone who likes our page. Several of you probably got a notification, CNUSD added a new event in your area. So it draws people's attention. So we tried that this year for the CTE expo. We also sent out a text reminder the night before to all of our parents in our district, reminding them of that event. Because we know it's crucial in reaching our students and allowing them to have those hands-on opportunities. Allowing them to sit in those simulation chairs, right? Start and ignite those passions. So we were sure to send out those reminder texts to parents, giving them a heads-up. And we actually were thrilled with the turnout of the expo. I know several of us were there. It was so exciting to see all the kids, all the families running around enjoying it. And I loved going up to the booths. I don't know about you guys, I loved the students telling you all about it. They were the most passionate ones there, right? I didn't even need to teach, talk to the teachers. The students were telling you what they were learning. So that was neat to see. Specifically our strategic outreach, we are really been strategizing this last year as well. On how to reach um, the parents of our EL students. Some of the ways we've been doing that is sending out our valuable staff members to these events so they can speak with those parents one-on-one. We also do targeted social media posts and as well as advertisements. Where we're doing all of our social media posts in English and Spanish. You might not see all of the Spanish posts if you're an English speaker and you have your Facebook settings to English. Because we actually target Spanish speakers. So if people have their settings set to Spanish, they're going to see Spanish posts. Um, we also have regular attendance at our ELAP meetings here at the district. We do presentations informing them about our, our CTE programs. And this year, a way we're expanding is we want to go out to the ELAP um, meetings at our school sites. We're a really small staff. We can't reach all of them. So we're strategizing, how can we do this better? How can we reach all of our ELAPs and really make those personal connections? So one of the ways we came up with is we're really hoping to make little viable content videos that we can send out to all of our ELAPs. Hey, do you mind sharing this quick video with your parents at your next meeting? So that's on the docket for this year. We're excited to do that. They'll definitely be highlighting our CTE programs. Um, we're also sure to translate all of our marketing material in English and Spanish. And then as well, some of our videos, not some, all of our videos on Facebook and on Vimeo and YouTube. We are adding Spanish subtitles so that if we don't necessarily have the resources yet to create English and Spanish videos. We at least have those subtitles on there for our Spanish speakers to follow along as well. Multimedia communication. You guys know we have two new multimedia specialists in our office. They do amazing work. Steve is here tonight. Um, and they are helping us produce and continue on a series that Lily actually started a few years back. Which is our CTE Spotlight Series. This series goes out to the school sites, interviews our students, gets them on camera excited about the programs. And then we're able to share what these programs are with our parents and our community. These videos help produce excitement from our community more than any of our other videos. It's amazing. We put them out to the community and the community really just goes wild. They love seeing the hands-on learning. The industry certifications that our students get. So we'll continue to do those and spread those across our community. Um, and Hit on the Handbook that we also produced and we'll be updating that for this year. And then we also help with our expo marketing, producing a marketing kit, sending out flyers to parents, postcards, banners, things of that nature. Um, as far as electronic communication, we are, we've always produced our CNUSD Connection Newsletter. Quick update on that, it used to be a subscribe-in-only option. We had about twenty-seven thousand subscribers. But we actually just got a new program where we're going to be able to create those newsletters and send them to all of our parents, district-wide. So everybody will receive that information um, monthly and we intend to do a CTE portion on there. Specifically dedicated to highlighting our CTE programs. So we're excited about that. We help the team maintain our website, send out school messenger information, um, peach dark flyers, and then again, press releases. So today, we actually have a video. Um, it is our CTE Expo highlight video. So it hasn't been released to the public. This is special screening. Um, it'll be going out next week, but enjoy.
Being a CTE program helps me like expand my opportunities and like further excel my career?
I love it. It's actually helped me find my career that I want to go to in the future.
I like that we get to see different people from different careers. It just gives a lot of range of like careers that some people don't know about and you might be interested in.
We do have a woodshop program here. We do great stuff such as uh, cabinet making, furniture.
I enjoy it because I like robotics.
I like the fact that it's kind of an open class. There's not too many strict rules. It's more just follow instructions. So I like the challenge and the freedom to do what you want.
It's about it. We can just learn in auto shop. You learn everything about the engine, the tires. It's just really fun.
The interview actually went pretty well. I feel like everyone here knows what they're doing and they're really helping practice.
I personally love the friendships that I make throughout the experience.
Definitely advances my leadership skills, so I really appreciate it.
Definitely do it. It's so much fun. You'll never regret joining.
Currently I'm learning Java and then there's also virtual reality, augmented reality.
It helps me like public speaking and also networking.
How that it also incorporates like forensics.
Some of the industry standards like Unity, I'm learning right now, even as a high school student. And it's this, it's like a similar amount of rigor.
There are some challenges to it, but work through it, the reward is so much more.
I definitely think that I'll be pursuing biomedical programs, either a veterinarian or EMT.
Be a woodworking teacher or maybe a mason.
I definitely will be going to engineer in my future.
So I will definitely pursue a program of, like, game design in the future.
Take as many of these classes as you can because you may not think it'll help you, but eventually it'll do something for you. Like, it's never always.
I definitely think I have a future.
So I want to thank um, our communications department and for the time they put into this. We only had expo a couple of weeks ago. What was fun about expo and how we counted how many students we had there, how many people in general. Was that um, Altura gave us fifteen hundred bags. We gave out thirteen hundred bags. And um, so we had major amount of people. This is the first year that I've provided buses to all the intermediate schools. Not all the intermediate schools took advantage of it, but we did have maybe four buses come in. And it wasn't just students. We asked them to invite their parents. Um, and we did have like home gardens send two buses. So we were trying to reach out in different ways. Um, but we can't do that unless we have money. And of course, everybody knows LCAP does not fund everything that I do. And um, I just wanted to briefly review and let you know where we are. But it's important to me that you realize, Lenny's been around a long time and she said that. She's been down here almost as much time as I have been because I brought her on. Lenny is not a district employee. She is paid out of grants that I get for the district. Um, and that's how we bring in Gloria. And that's actually how CAT's been paid for this year also, is out of two grants. Uh, but the professionalism and the expertise and the resources they bring to our CTE programs are unbelievable. Could not do what we're doing. I couldn't do what we're doing without their help. So they're instrumental. So we have uh, just a few grants. I wanted to let you know the status of. Per Confederate grant, uh, we get about three hundred thousand dollars yearly from that. Doesn't go a long way, but we do use it to support equipment for the different pathways. CTE incentive grant, this current year, we pulled in one point six million um, spread across the district. K-12 Strong Workforce, uh, we just got our first grant for that, this award this year, one point five million. Uh, it's a thirty-month competitive grant. Um, supports those five pathways. And it's very instrumental that we work with the community colleges and develop those partnerships. I mean, that's, that's why we're specific to those pathways. Because we look at what Norco College has, we looked at what uh, CHPE has, and then we line, I have to spend the money based on that. Um, we're going to apply for some Eastham reimbursement money again. Uh, didn't have a lot of luck with that last year, but I got my scorecards back. We're going to try and get some money back out of that. Uh, and then of course, we have the LCAP. Could not do what we do in these programs without this funding. Uh, what are next steps? We need to continue to, to work towards our CCI indicators. Uh, the state is now collecting data on two other, two new indicators. Those two new indicators are Student Own Project, which is basically it's going to, where it will help the most is our agriculture program. But there's seventy-five thousand kids up and down the state in agriculture that own their own businesses. That would have been left out of a work-based learning um, CCI indicator without that in there. I kind of pat myself on the back for that one, even though maybe I shouldn't. For those who don't know, I sit on the CCI, um, the state CCI subgroup. And I told, I managed to talk to events that we've got to do something for work-based learning. But we have other industries, other students that own their own businesses. So this isn't just for the ag kids, it's for all of them. Um, the other indicator is going to be internships. And so this, next year, they're just collecting data and then they'll see if they want to put it in. But you heard Gloria talk about students with internships. So we're already doing things to meet those indicators. Um, we'll continue to work on the seven fourteen pathways. We find those, develop our um, our post-secondary connections. Business and industry, I think you heard quite a bit about what we are doing with business and industry. It's not an easy thing. Uh, but we just keep pounding away at it. And then of course, our funding and where we're at with that. Again, I'd like to thank our IT data team for setting up this dashboard that we're using for the first time. Communications department for all the work they do for us. And uh, my team from Ed Services and then everybody that I have here tonight in supporting what we're doing. And don't be mean to me, but I'll take any questions.
Um, I have a couple, just a couple of observations. I love it. Thank you everybody. It was awesome. The students, it was pretty cool to be here yet. Um, I've been able to be involved in the, the interviews for the, the career expo. I think I, I started when it was at Cross, Crossroads.
Uh, yes, it did.
And just a, a compliment to the, the, the classes and the students. Just from, you know, that, the, the first year of doing the mock interviews. To, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to do them this year, but each year, the quality of, of the students. And their interview skills and those soft skills that, that Lenny you were mentioning were just incredible. So just kudos to, to um, our teachers and the instructors and our students for absorbing everything and learning. I just thought that was awesome. Um, and going on to the, the quality of the, the students, I'm, you know, the, the critical thinking skills and the technical skills. And the medical, I'm, I'm going to speak specifically on the medical part because that's, that's my background. But um, probably ten years ago, I would have been very threatened. You know, but now that I'm looking, I see a line of retirement down the road. I'm very excited because I know that our, uh, my career will be. These kids are going to be better their first year than, than, you know, my twentieth year, so um. And then uh, just a, not a caution, but a, a recommendation. If you are going to have the chopping and cutting uh, competition, make sure you include our health and medical pathways. They'll be able to maybe gain some suturing skills. And then my, my last comment, and this is, this isn't a comment, but a question because I'm a little bit confused. You might be able to help me how it works. I'm on the advisory committee for the sports medicine um, CTE. But it's through RCOE, so I, I go to RCOE for the meeting. But it's, it's Corona, it's, you know, through Centennial primarily, but we have Norco, we have all of the, the high schools, athletic trainer, right? So I, what's the, I, I don't understand how that, how that works, what our collaboration is.
So um, five or six years ago, when LCAP came to be, the cap, well, the county used to get all their funding for their ROP CTE programs from the state. And when LCAP came into play, the ROPs, the county offices, no longer got money to run the programs. So, but we wanted to keep our programs. So what we have done is contract with RCOE to maintain that teaching staff. All of those teachers have designated subjects. So they essentially have two bosses. Um, they're hired by the county, but I provide all the money. And so they still have to do their meetings with RCOE, but they also have meetings and stuff they do with us. So we have ten point three-three teachers that are in that situation.
How, so in the future, I mean, I, I don't, I, I don't know the, how to answer this or what I'm even asking. But I mean, would, would there be a, a, a time where, where they're all CNUSD? Or is it, is that collaboration still the best way?
For now, that's the best way.
Okay.
Because it all comes, well, our declining enrollment, and I know you understand all that. But the ROP, the teachers only have business subject credentials, which are all based on business and industry. They don't have single subjects, which is required by our district. So the, the um, the collaboration we have with them now is the best way.
So we have ten?
We have ten point three-three, yeah. The point three-three is at Pollard and that is for um, uh, law enforcement.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank you for everything you do for our kids. And I'm so proud and I love bragging when I go to Sacramento or Washington DC, right, Elliot? We, we just, you know, we were there with Riverside Unified and we're the only ones with aviation. So of course, we had to say that a million times. And every time we said that, Dr. Hanson just went, oh. But you know, I mean, we talked about our other programs also. But we, we have such unique programs in our district. And um, I see our kids, they're excited about these, these programs that we have. Because they are going to be able to, not everybody's going to go to college. The kids that are going to go to trade, I mean, they're, they're seeing what they want to do in high school at an early age, even in junior high now. So um, I think we are very well preparing our students. I just wish this was here when my kids went here, but with a lot of push, I got those kids through paramedic school. But um, this is amazing. And I love, I've been talking to a lot of our students that graduated with my kids. That are, there's um, one that's doing her residency at UCLA, uh, in medical. She's going to be a doctor. And then um, there's on, uh, one of our guys is um, the one that stands out there on the map for the airplane controller. Um, so I'm, you know, asking them to contact you so they can come back and talk to our kids. Because they graduated from our schools and that's something that I think the kids need to hear. You know, there is hope. These kids graduated from here and look what they are now. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Thank you students for coming and telling us. Because it's great to hear from them because we know they're telling us what we want to hear, but we want to hear from you guys too. Because you guys are the ones that are going through the classes. So thank you so much.
You know, I don't always tell you what to do.
Well, I thought I.
But you know, you mentioned the medical fields and, and I think that's a big one. And you look at Dr. Roosevelt. Um, she is a doctor and chose not to go into the medical profession. Um, I think she would have been happier if she had found out, found that out a little bit earlier in her career. But she's a great teacher.
Same, same thing at El Cerrito too, her state teacher. Who actually went into an is, a doctor, but came back into teaching.
And, and same thing with Mary. I echo everything she said, how proud we are. And so, you know, wherever you get a chance, I know that I do, and I don't care if it's a city council or whoever it is, I'm bragging about what we're doing here. But what I was really got, I was really interested in the fact that you're reaching out further than what we're doing right here. You're always looking ahead, looking ahead. And I was saying, we need to get connected with Amgen to do some more biotech, you know, eighty grand. Right off two years certification. No, I know for sure because I've worked with it for years. And they're looking for women and they're giving scholarships and they're looking for them. So those are kind of things that we want to look at. Yeah, yeah. They're, uh, Cerritos College, uh, welding. You want to go to Rio Hondo, it's where my brother graduated. And so, you know, really, and I love it because we saturate it here. Put our tennis out and get the rest.
Well, and I think you can see that I've also got a very diverse team.
You do.
And um, sort of these great role models from the different people we work with. And Lenny works very hard at bringing in a diverse group of people. She's very proud of our Edison, female Edison engineers. And giving them, and she works very hard to do that and I appreciate that. We need a model for all of us. Okay, Dr. Wallace?
Well, of course, of course, I thank everybody. Thank you, well. And I have some really good questions.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I just put my ear in.
Are you that well? Yeah, you know me, well, the question is, first of all, the demographics, right? I ask you about, I didn't notice African Americans are not represented in the, where are they?
Dr. Wallace, they're not identified in the LCAP and so the students that we highlighted in our presentation tonight are the students in LCAP. But we can certainly get the data for you regarding our student, our African-American students.
It's just, just recognizable that our African-American kids who are really behind the academics are not represented in their, in their course, so.
Right, right, yeah, no, we've got the information.
And the other thing I, I have is the, well, congratulations to the grants, those are millions of dollars. You know, I, I, in the past, I used to write grants too and you know, it is, you get those grants, those are trophies, those are big, big monies that you can help, you know, our students. So congratulations for those millions of grants. Now, for, for, for career tech education and the general ed, you know, gen ed that they're getting, I guess I need, I need to be, I need to understand, they're taking those CTE classes, but the gen ed classes, what, what gen ed classes do they take, regular class or?
It depends on what they're taking. For instance, did you guys take medical biology?
Yes.
Okay, so they took medical biology and that counts for their science credit.
I see, okay.
So it's, it, it brings that hands on, so they're focused on medical in there. All of our A through G courses are the same way. Now, we have a, an abundance of G courses, but if you look at the agriculture program where we have our government and economics, that counts for their senior year government and economics credit.
Okay, so those are the articulation classes that you're talking about?
Yeah, and, and, and CTE students, some of them are taking AP classes, some of them are in Avid and, you know, the district's done a really good job and really trying to support those students and the different pathways. They're in athletics, they, they get equal access to everything too and, and across the curriculum. So if they want to take an honors or an AP, an articulated or dual enrollment class, they can do that.
Yeah, okay, good, well, the other comment I want to make is, now that we have a medical field, you're competing with Filipino nurses. There's, we have so many Filipino nurses in our hospital and because we're not producing enough at all, right? So I think that, and, and, you know, you see a lot of people not having a job and so all these immigrants, you know? Not in a negative way, but saying, how come there's so many jobless here? Here we are, study abroad, train abroad and come here as nurses and, and we settle down. I think, so from, in my head, I think it's time for our students to, to grow our own so we can, because we can sustain it, there's so many students that we have that needs to be trained that way and we just need to reach out to them, right?
Yeah.
So congratulations there. Nursing's the best.
Madam President, any other questions?
Actually, if I could.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just great job and we talk obviously about equity and my way of thinking, this is probably one of the most important things we do for equity. And Ryan, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have you stand up again, or you, I already stand. Do you mind if I ask you a few more questions?
Sure.
So you're, you've liked the CT near classes that you've done because they've been hands-on, right?
Yeah.
Which is what you're going to be doing for your career, correct? So if you can, think through, if you didn't, in eighth grade, you said is when you found out this, what would school be like, because you're a senior now, right?
Yeah.
What would school have been for you at Norco High from freshman year to where you are right now? I know this is on the spot, you didn't know I was gonna ask this, but if you can, just kind of, what, what would the feel be if you didn't have the, the great class, the, the CTE classes that you have?
I just don't think I'd be interested in coming to school at all, I don't enjoy any of the classes.
That, that was kind of what I thought you were responsible. And that's okay, you, you absolutely made my point that what you and your team has accomplished is providing something, not only for Ryan, because now you've gone to, you've gone to Kentucky, right?
Yeah.
You competed at a, not just state level, you first you did that, but then went to a national conference and competed in front of really high, high level because there are people from every state in the union. Did you ever envision that would be part of your life in high school? Never. And that's, I'm about ready to cry, I mean. That's how powerful this is.
And you found out about it through the CTE expo.
Yeah, yeah, and yes, exactly, and I'm, I'm, thank you for saying that.
I think his mom's about to cry.
Actually, I love it, mom stand up.
Actually, the only thing I want to say is that they competed, they were the only team that finished the entire project out of all the other high school teams and college teams that competed at that competition.
Thank you, Ryan, for letting me put you on the spot.
Thanks so much.
Madam President.
Thank you so much, again, before we all start crying. This is amazing, it is truly, truly amazing. Thank you for, and I know you, you probably don't sleep at night just thinking, what other crap? You're gonna get us because we need the money, but thank you. All right, before going on, I would like to hear a little bit more about the communication awards that we're getting tonight.
Oh, sure, thank you. So as Brittany mentioned, a couple of members of our team are in downtown Los Angeles this evening to accept an award from PRSA, which is the Public Relations Society of America. And so we competed, some of the recipients that are receiving this award are Loyola Marymount University, companies like, I don't know if I can read these.
NBC Four.
NBC Four, West, West Hollywood. So we're the only school district to be receiving an honor, so Lily would have been here to say that.
Could you say that a little bit louder? Billy Cabra?
We're excited about that, so thank you.
That is very exciting. I did see the list today, Lily came to the PTA council meeting and she showed me and I was like, you guys compete against all those huge mega companies and we're the only school district, so we rock. I want to say, all right, let's get back to business. Consent items, are there any items to be pulled from the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, at seven C is entirely.
Anything else? Four, eight, okay, eight, A and B. B, eight, A, B. Seven C, eight A, eight B. One one?
For nine, eight, this is eight, yeah, nine A.
Nine, eight?
Yes.
All right. So we will.
All consent.
Yes. We'll approve, there are.
Seven C.
What didn't get pulled, so.
All consent.
Motion? Leave it at half, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll start with seven C.
I just have, I have a question on this, on this grant development, I know Rondo's a new school. I know Lisa and I have a question about, is this, is this normal, is this what's done?
Yes, when we start a new school or we have to, or if we make a major change in a school, we have to do a certain amount of branding, like the mascot, the school names, you know, we have Rondo School of Discovery, that's a new name we want to brand, also their mascot. And I know Alan, you're well involved in this too, if you want to add anything to that representing facilities.
Is this like getting a trademark, is this?
Yeah, it's part of it, so, so they'll do, so it used to be Barca you brand, but B, BSN Sports bought them out, so now it's a subsidiary of BSA, BSN Sports. So we recently used them with Lincoln, when we changed Lincoln to, from Lincoln Alternative to Lincoln Fundamental, we used them with Todd a few years ago when Todd changed their mascot. And so they do mockups of the mascot and Trevor will get to select and then that'll be basically licensed to where nobody else can use that same mascot for their mascot. So that's what they do.
Yeah, just one other piece is that it keeps us consistent, like all our logos are consistent with each other, you know, throughout our district.
So if, if a school wants to change their logo, you know, it's still Winkin Lion, but instead of a roaring lion, they have a Tony the Tiger lion or something like that, which obviously they couldn't use Tony the Tiger because it's probably a brand. They, you have to go through this process?
It, it's best for us to go through this process so that we get licensed mascots that we're not reproducing somebody else's, that we don't get ourselves into trouble.
So they about, they, they research that and make sure that it's not?
We get just enough to where it's not a copycat of somebody else's.
So part of this add to, part of this agreement also includes, as Lisa mentioned, the branding, markings, colors, mascot creation with every school site marking, so each, each of our schools has a brand book. And so a part of this agreement not only includes, includes the artistic elements of the logo, but also the legal elements too, so that other entities are prohibited from using our, our school markings and logos.
And, and this, how long has this been, I mean, is this?
So the district underwent a rebranding of all of our school logos about six years ago.
That was two, yeah.
Any other questions to that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote. Second. All in favor? Next, eight A, Lisa?
Okay, so I, I can combine these with, with A and B, I want to know is the, again, is this something standard that we do every year then to, to approve these companies that come in? I know that for our lawyers, for example, you know, we have different lawyers that have different things that, we had that question a long time ago, so is this in essence the same type of thing where we have special companies that have specialties that, that we use every year in order to, to do mitigation or school messenger, is that?
So this company, no, so this company is the one we've used for our, all our websites and we have standardized all our websites across the district. And we standardize on the design, so that the look and feel is the same. And also, the, we, the school messenger program is the one we use for mass communication. So part of the presentation that you saw as we communicated out to our parents and community, we, we use a school messenger application that comes with.
Okay, and the same for B with the mitigation?
Uh, no, B with the medica, maybe with mitigation, that's different. That's, CenturyLink is our new ISP and a subs provider. And the provider service, so if we have internet attacks where we're flooded with a lot of traffic on our, on our, on our, on our data lines and then we can, we can, we can turn on a service that can support or mitigate denial of service attack.
Oh, okay, so I'm thinking about when we get to our May season or April season, we start doing our major testing? We're gonna have major overload?
Yes, so that, so those attacks happen throughout the year and certainly during the SVAC testing period. So what we do is we, well, we have this service that will support attacks like that so that our data, data line, our, our internet lines are not, are not flooded. Because once they're flooded, our internet go, our internet services go down. So this service now with our internet provider is now the same company and they've made it pretty simple now that if we get an attack, all we do is send a text message and we say yes, turn on the service and, and, and we'll open up our data.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that.
Okay, let's vote on eight A.
I move A.
Second. All in favor? Okay, now we will vote on eight B.
Okay, I'll move eight B.
Second. All in favor? Okay, John, nine A.
Uh, nine A, I just, because of being on the YMCA board, I want to recuse myself, so I will be abstaining. So you can vote, so I'm, I'm just gonna abstain.
All right, all in favor, nine A?
Motion.
Motion.
I motion, I move.
My second.
All right, all in favor?
And I'm abstaining.
Okay, without any further ado, we will, I need a motion to close our, adjourn our ceremony?
I move.
Our meeting, sorry, all in favor? Oh, do we need a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All right, all right, meeting adjourned.